Thank you. We now have our required number of board members. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Beacon Town Central School District Board of Education meeting, day on September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I've never used this gavel, so I don't know what I'm supposed to do with it, but I'm going to call everyone to order. Of course, we're going to stay in the political meetings. Chairman, if I have to go, say that. Thank you. Call order. Roll call please, Courtney. Secretary PD, Jeremy Connors.
Here.
Patty LeBlanc. Cheryl Mahnembe.
Here.
Ed Merritt. Kristi Fermachak.
Here.
Crystal Palmer. Here. Nicole Corr.
Here.
Is Riley lucky here? Student four hundred.
Oh, super.
We got track tonight, and they'll be over there right after.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, moving on. Resolved, the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the agenda. Mag a motion, please.
Motion, report.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Resolution passed. Presentations. First topic will be the retirement class. And I, at the honor, presenting these tonight. Two of our three hardworking members are here. The first, we'd like to recognize Sally Sample, who is a teacher aide, student aide, gave ten years of service to our district. Thank you very much, Sally.
Sally said she couldn't be here, and then she's.
Thank you, Sally. I do not see Sid.
Let me just give her a.
The second retiree today is Sid Demingking. She was a teacher aide, student aide, for sixteen point twelve years. Thank you very much for all your hard work, and we appreciate it. And lastly, Marie Galix, an elementary teacher at Beacon Town, for thirty-one point thirteen years. Amazing. Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Thank you so much. Really appreciate everyone, and enjoy your retirement. Next topic, opening of schools. Our presenters will be our principals, Matthew Desai, Duncan Nelson, Carson Stender, and Melissa Barlow. Principals, you have the floor.
I'll start for high school. I just want to first thank, number one, our teachers. I want to thank our counselors for all the hard work they did, going to the ground, getting the ground ready for our kids to come in and feel what we have to do in the building. IP for all the hard work they did, getting stuff together, getting from those guys. This year, working with our teachers to make sure our new art boards are all set up and costumes are ready for our kids. Administration team here, thank you, Paul. We do work together all summer. Custodial workers doing a great job keeping the building clean and safe for our kids and our parents at. So, I'll just start by thanking, you know, board members. So, just want to kind of go back a little bit to summer school. So, we did have summer school this year. It was a great opportunity for our kids to come in, just to give everybody an idea of kind of the impact summer school had this year. We had fourteen teachers that taught summer school at the high school. Seventy-one students obtained course credit. Thirty-two students obtained a region assessment of credit. And twenty-one incoming ninth graders had social-emotional learning, college and career readiness through SCV, CFES, throughout the summer for six weeks. So, it was a huge success in the high school, having the summer school. Our kids were impacted greatly, received credit for graduation, assessment credit. And I put a tip of the cap on our teachers coming in the summer and working really hard with our students to make sure that they were successful. Summer school was a huge success this year. Freshman orientation, we kicked off on September first. We had all the new incoming freshmen coming campus. We went over the expectations, the safety expectations. We did some forms. They had a building tour with our peer connector club, so they had to interact with some of our upperclassmen, explore the building, go through their schedules. Just get a situate back in the building, which was really nice. So, and then we had, we call it virtual new student orientation. So, throughout the summer, at the end of August, any student that was virtual last year, we had them come into school and get re-assimilated. We did that on a grade level. The counselors did a great job setting that up. They rode the bus into school. We wanted to make it as normal as possible for those students, make it, you know, a re-assimilation that they, you get back on campus. You know, I think a lot of anxiety when you're out for a while. We wanted to kind of ease that anxiety. So, we had some scavenger hunts around campus. They went to the teach office, they went to their locker, they went to their classrooms. It's kind of more together. It was really a nice turnout. It was really nice having the buses, so they could get on the bus and get a feel for the whole experience. So, we did do that with our tenth, eleventh, twelfth graders and ninth graders having orientation. So, it was a huge success getting our kids done for the building. Hopefully, we're some of that anxiety when they came back. Then we had a back to social show. That was the first day of school. We were able to bring this back this year. What we usually do is do the briefing schedule the first day of school, and then we go out on the athletic field at the end of the day for about an hour and a half, and the kids get to interact. They get the social-emotional learning, they get to be with each other, they can re-assimilate with each other. We have music, we have games, yard games, and it was really cool to see the kids interacting. And one of the things that's nice for us as admin or counselors, is to walk around and get a feel for anybody who's by themselves. And I think that was a huge key for us to evaluate where students are. And that was a rarity, which was really nice to see. It wasn't the kids just hanging out by themselves. The kids were together, they were hanging out, they were laughing, they were having a great time, and it was, you know, really a wonderful experience. Then we moved around to grade level assemblies. Grade level assemblies happened this past Tuesday, September seventh, and that's just me kind of going in front of the eighth grade level, bringing them in, kind of going over the expectations, going over the safety protocols, a little bit of motivation, kind of how powerful they are, just trying to motivate them for a class period, and just going through that process with them. CB Tech Division students did start on September seventh as well, Brent CB Tech Division. They're full fledged at this point. I'm enjoying time over there, interacting and getting used to those procedures as well. And then finally, I know you probably saw the parent square, kind of a cool thing that we're doing right now, just waiting to kind of find a grant approval. It's funny, they offer, to offer all of our college credit courses free of charge. So, it's a wonderful opportunity. Just to give you an idea of the mass of what that's going to impact on our students, there's seven, seven hundred and nineteen students being affected. Five hundred and forty-eight students in the high school, but they're taking local classes. So, that's seven hundred and nineteen of our students are taking college courses that will receive college credit. So, that's a wonderful opportunity that we're providing our kids, you know, to tip in everybody's gap and through the board, administrative teams. So, wonderful start to the year, a lot of great things going on, a lot of happy faces, assimilating back in the building. Our kids are here, they're learning, our teachers are here. It's a wonderful experience. So, excited for the next couple of weeks and the rest of the year. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Principal Desai?
All right, I'll go back since I missed the agenda. Principal Desai, nice job. Thanking everybody. I hope that online, too. Buildings and grounds did a wonderful job finding me some chairs for my students to sit in the day before school opens, so they did an amazing job preparing my building for opening day on September third. The transportation department, I don't know what I would do without them, and they have been phenomenal in terms of helping us rearrange and finding out bus numbers. So, Jim and Missy just deserve a standing ovation. They are great. Every day, I work with them. And tech, Gary and his team, they did a wonderful job setting our students up with email accounts and making sure they can log into clever, and getting us Chromebooks that needed to be repaired, so that our kids can just dive in to learning. And Jen Parliament, I don't know how you do it, but I would like to thank you and your office staff. Every time I call, I know I'm going to get an answer or shortly after. So, I don't know why you haven't answered the phone. But she does a wonderful job. So, thank you very much. It definitely takes a village. I would like to begin with something that happened over the summer that you may or not be aware of. Beacon Town Middle School was designated as a CFES Brilliant Pathway School of Distinction for the second year in a row, and so that's pretty impressive during a pandemic. I did tell Karen and Steven, I said, is this one that everyone gets a ribbon type of deal? And so, they assured me that it wasn't, and so we're pretty proud of that. Prior to opening our doors, the middle school facilitated a sixth grade orientation. We had a huge turnout for that. And then we also had a seventh and eighth grade reorientation where students who were virtual or just didn't feel comfortable in the building, because we were potted last year, could come back and get a tour of the building. We reviewed our expectations, and we also shared with parents and the students our mission here at Beacon Town. The first day of school was awesome. We really enjoyed seeing all of those students back in the building, smiling and asking those questions about where these rooms were and where they needed to go, but they surely found them. We had the pleasure of having David Edward Garcia, a motivational speaker that is sponsored by the Gira Grant, come the first day of school. His message of resilience and perseverance, along with facilitating students through goal-setting activity, really resonated with them. Administration, that's Mrs. Manchester and myself, took time to meet with students from each grade level to present this year's theme of resilience. One student dubbed it as our comeback year. We outlined the expectations and just reiterated the importance of us being a community and supporting one another in this upcoming school year. The counseling team also did a presentation and activity with our students that was really about the power of communication and using that to help us all personally, again, that support one another in this upcoming school year. In grade level teams, we had a kickball tournament for the eighth grade that was brilliant and a huge success. And then other teams did some team building and relationship building just to get to know their students. The first days of school, teachers have focused on the emotional recovery of our students by focusing on strengthening relationships. As students become re-acclimated to being back in our school, our counselors are going to begin providing top twenty lessons this upcoming week during advisory. It is clear that our middle school teachers have placed the social-emotional wellbeing of our students as a top priority. Our FastBridge, it's not just all about feeling good, right? Our FastBridge Math and ALA assessments have started and are being used to uncover any deficits and understand where students are as we move forward in supporting their academic recovery. Picture Day went smoothly. That was a success. It's all automated now, so no one has to be present in the school to make sure the kids get checked in with paper, so it's all electronic. So, that went well. We have our first middle school fundraiser this weekend, Saturday, five to nine, at Tripoli. So, I'm hoping that you show up. You can even order online if there's a code I can provide you. So, we're hoping that is a success. We're also proud to have over a hundred and twenty seventh and eighth grade students participating in fall sports. That is pretty incredible that we were able to pull that off, and I would like to recognize Mr. Forchet for helping us get a second modified team for volleyball. So, that, the more the merrier, right? Getting them all to participate helps with their academic performance. So, we're off to a good start, but I could be remiss in not acknowledging that we had experienced our only challenges in the middle school since the onset of this year, but as always, we will need them head on. And as Samuel Johnson said, and I'm being a little cliche here, anyone can quote, he said, "Grade works are performed not by strength, but by perseverance." I continue to be optimistic about this school year and look forward to seeing all that our students, faculty, and staff members are able to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Principal Nelson? Thank you.
I'll go, but I think I have a convenient microphone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, okay. So, I'd start similar style. Thank you, everybody, for all of their support and hard work. It truly does take a village to make our school run. We did have a busy summer. This is the first year since I've been here that we've had the summer bridge program for general education students running alongside our extended school year for our students in special education. We had about fifty students participate, K through five, and it was very successful. The kids enjoyed field trips every Friday, as well as some social-emotional, some team building, and some good academic lessons were being taught at the same time. I will say our custodial staff had a busy summer putting together our classrooms. Since when the pandemic started, all of the materials were empty from the classroom and stored in several places all around Cumberland Head. So, they were very busy pointing that storage, figuring out who belongs to what. We were using the cafeteria this year, and I did have some moments of panic, like the day before school, when I didn't have tables in there, but Jen Parliament and your crew, thank you very much, came through. Tables were ready for students on the first day of school. Our classrooms and our grounds looked great. Teachers came in mid-August, starting to get ready and put all of those nice elementary touches on their classrooms. Our cafeteria staff, they were prepared. I appreciate their flexibility. In the beginning of the school year, we had planned that we were going to do kiosks around the building and not use the cafeteria line. Well, the next morning, the second day of school, I said, well, we're back to a cafeteria line, because it was going to be a safer and more efficient way to get kids fed in the morning. And they were very patient, and they were ready, so I really appreciate that. Our secretary of staff, busy answering phone calls, directing our staff, and helping teachers in the office. The work of all these people is really appreciated, and it's clearly always a hectic start, but things come together nicely in the end. So, our staff participated in superintendent's day, completing our state mandated training, as well as a full day of Marsha Tate. Now, if you don't know Marsha, Marsha is an author, and she talks about twenty brain compatible strategies to use with students to make their learning, like, stick. So, our teachers seemed to be really engaged with her. She was humorous, funny. She had people up and moving. My teachers reported that they really appreciated what she had to offer, so I look forward to welcoming her back. Our faculty meeting, we met as a group. We have several new staff members at Cumberland Head, so we took time to get to know each other, presented our business service pins, and we, of course, discussed our safety topics for the, our procedures for the year. And we had our open house, September second. We were, we had an in-person open house that looked traditional. It was very well-attended, and students were able to meet their new teachers and visit their classmates. I think it was nice to be able to welcome our parents back into the building the day before school started to kind of get those nervous jitters out. And opening day was fantastic. Our students were greeted with music, and we had words of encouragement written on the sidewalk. I would admit, it did take a little bit of time to establish our routines, our processes, with you have so many new staff members and new students, but it's coming along nicely. Our students were all treated to a free ice cream cone from the Frosty Cow Ice Cream Truck on the first day of school. And similar to what Principal Desai was saying, it was a nice way to have the teachers get to know students on an informal level. They gathered ice cream cones, and they were all in front of each other, visiting with each other, and our crush and our counselors. We're looking for those students who may be a little standout or something on their own, so that was really great to see. And of course, our elementary teachers are continuing to teach routines and procedures that can touch the students' social-emotional growth. This year, we're happy to be welcoming back our classroom state practical students. Several teachers have taken on this responsibility, which is vulnerable, given everything else they have to balance in their day. So, they're happy for those extra hands, and it's also just nice to see my staff giving back to their profession by working with our young teachers. Couple of nice things to look forward to. Our PTO is planning to do a trunk-or-treat in October. If you don't know what that is, like I didn't know it was, they are lining up in the parking lot and decorating their car trucks, and students will walk around and have trunk or treat. We have our student council starting to meet. They're coming up with ideas and kind of improve our school and the community. They, the leaders expressed that they would like to do something for the Honor for it, for it, so I'm looking forward to that. And on fall, I think staff are ready for a great year ahead. We'll have some challenges to face, but I think by working together, it will be a pretty great year.
Thank you. Any questions?
You guys gonna be okay? All right. I'll start off with saying accolades. I really appreciate what you guys already said. I'm not going to repeat everything, but I appreciate everybody. Summer Bridge, next in the school year, was very successful and a really good way to be acclimated to new positions. So, that was just wonderful, and I had principal staff that would be there at the very beginning, so it was very helpful. I met Bass and Roy, the staff, via Google Meet or separate grade level meetings throughout the summer, and that worked out very, very well. We had independent meetings, we had one-on-one meetings, we had these Google Meet meetings that we just, it was so welcoming. They were so wonderful. I met about forty-five staff before school even started. My typist did the nominal job, getting everything ready for the school year to start up, managing families, managing schedules, and helping me with a lot of different things as well that would be. Buildings and grounds were diligently prepared for the return of those students. The exterior playground equipment, throughout what the bins are outside of the playground, have been removed, and we have things inside now, so it's been better so far. They were collecting bees and other things in there as well, so it's been safer for the kids now. We also have a new look inside the elementary building. We had, the bare brick was painted, bright red or gray to match the walls. It looks really pretty in there. In classrooms, we're diligently prepared to safely instruct our students a free feet apart, and teachers were very creative in meeting those needs. Day one, as Principal Southwood said, we had Marsha Tate. That was phenomenal. People really enjoyed that. Our open house was very successful. We had over three hundred families join us. Rumor has it Parkin was down all the way to the rec center, or rec park. We welcomed the vast majority of our students back on the third. Staff was prepared and continued to be prepared to offer support to students with anxiety about COVID, being back in the building and getting familiar with their surroundings. I'm very thankful to the counseling staff we have. In elementary, we've had a lot of anxiety coming back in. Students who were not in school at all last year, in the building at all, and very, very young, having their first experience, being back in the building has been very, very challenging for some of them. So, I'm very thankful for them. Week one, we quickly recognized, I think as she mentioned, two, we did seating charts in the cafeteria. We did these different tables that Jen helped us get. The interventionists have been crazy helpful with getting things labeled, keeping things organized, keeping it safe in the cafeteria in the mornings. And again, teachers have been very flexible with their seating and arranging their rooms. Interventionists and classroom teachers have begun to diligently work with FastBridge and get assessments done. The baseline assessments are now complete, and our classrooms are just ready to start those interventions. And I've visited every single classroom so far. Things look wonderful. Students are beyond excited to be back with their friends, have teachers in person, and be on the playground. They're so thrilled to be on that playground, just hang out, have fun, and play. One thing to look forward to, we have Echo STEM Night coming up in October, and we're looking to build that out and be very successful. PTO is going to support that as well, and that's what I have for you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I just want to comment that I think everyone touched on, especially for elementary. It was bad. The front door was crazy, but it was so nice to be able to bring the kids in, to see their, meet their teacher. I know for my son, he was, he had a little bit of anxiety about it. He was nervous, but excited at the same time. So, it really eased the adjustment. It was so nice to be able to do that. Your principals didn't have the same experiences. So, I fully appreciate everyone's effort that they put into getting, you know, public ready.
Thank you.
Is it okay for community members to ask questions?
You can do that under public comment?
Yes, which is next.
Yep, so next, okay. So, so moving on into the agenda, the next section is public comment. Just so everyone's aware, the governor has suspended through the New York State Open Meetings Law, has suspended this, but we as a board feel it's important to get the input for our community members. So, anybody that's here and wishes to make a comment, we just have a few guidelines. We ask that you state your name. We ask that you keep your comment to two minutes or less. We want you to be aware that anything that you say to us is just for information gathering. No decisions would be made by the board at this time. It's really just a listening session. And we ask that you not name any individual names as in signaling somebody out of a negative connotation. Don't use profanity and be civil. So, with that being said, does anyone in our public wish to make a comment? What? Please state your name.
You can either go there or to the mic, whatever.
I think I can. I'm a projector person.
Projector.
My name is Patrick Garso. I'm a resident of Wall Hill. I've been here all my life. My, I actually have a question, not so much a comment, but a question for the principals being the head of each of the respective schools. What were, what was one of the challenges that you guys actually had that if you could do it differently, you would do something different? And specifically, I'll provide a little bit more guidance, because I actually have a son that started UPK three. The new student experience for a child that hasn't been exposed to classrooms and schools, it was very challenging for me as a parent. I'm very glad to hear that the elementary principals acknowledged that there was difficulties, but I would also like to hear thoughts and ideas about what might be an opportunity for improving. I can tell you that my experience, my child, the communication that was sent home, the letter from the principal versus the letter from the staff, did not come together properly. Like, the messaging was different. That made a challenge and confusion for me as a parent. We had a very limited window of exposure. My son has never had classroom exposure. He didn't go to daycare.
Mr. Garso, I'm going to interject, because your time is running short. And also, just to mention again, this is a time to make comments, not ask questions. So, absolutely, we hear your concerns. I'll just mention that the appropriate chain of command for this would be to reach out to your students, your child's teacher, and if you don't get an answer to your concerns, you can certainly reach out to your, to your building principal. But again, generally, public comment is to say, you know, here's a, here's a concern. Can, can the school board take those concerns into consideration? Not necessarily to ask the teachers or administrators for, for response.
Simply with my question.
Sure. Is that, is that clear? Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any public comment they wish to make today? Seeing none, we're going to move on to reports. The first report is superintendent of schools, Mr. Daniel M.
So, I do appreciate public comment, and I can assure everybody here that our principals, like myself, are very reflective and all looking to improve. We have a lot of continuous improvement. We do know that none of us are.
You got a lot of feedback there.
That we're doing better now or not working at all? Can you hear me in the back?
You sound like a robot. Do you want to try this one?
How's that? A little bit better?
Yes.
So, we've done a lot of continuous improvement around here. We try to showcase that routinely, so I'm uncertain that there are, we look at the end of every day and say, oh, maybe we should have done this differently, and done that differently. That's what kind of makes us such a strong team here. So, number one, I would just like to say thank you to Marie for thirty-one point one years of helping our kids just have better, better lives and better outcomes. So, thank you so much for that. Thirty-one point one years to Beacon Town students is incredible. And point one hours, Riley's here today. Welcome, Riley. That's our board member, is a senior that year at Beacon Town and now a student board member. Thanks for being here. I encourage you to participate in the discussions with Riley. We've had, I've seen nine great years of people sitting at your seat, and they've always given great feedback. So, thank you for joining us. And Duncan, we did put in the enrollment pathways. And definitely, we did put in the Avril Pathways notification. It is the fourth portal. Congratulations to the middle school for a two P, we'll look for a three P next year. One more time for the recognition as a school of distinction. Actually, Avril Pathways wrote a book about successes in COVID of all their schools, and I think Beavetown was written in, into that book three or four times, so that was quite an honor. Number four on my list is the Honor Flight. I saw somebody mentioned that they wanted to do something with the Honor Flight. We wrote that into a brand, a new brand this year. So there will be opportunities to do really great things with the Honor Flight. We are having some folks wanting, wanting to have a virtual learning option this year that we did last year. We had a really robust virtual learning option last year. I'm gonna ask Principal Lozai of the Reopening Committee to give a little feedback on what we do offer this year. And it is a really good program that we started, I think, eight or nine, eight or nine years ago, and now we're adding virtual into it. This was a program that the whole Reopening Committee thought was the best program for virtual students and the best program to bring kids back into the building, which was our number one goal. And if we were to look at expending new funds someplace else, my current priority is either a sixth grade, third grade, or fifth grade teacher, as we have three different grade levels that are a little bit... Normally, they're not bigger than like, they're, they're significant, but not big. But in a COVID environment, space is important, so those would be three priorities for me. Another priority was to bring in new hires, so we worked with the business office and the principals. And we did add, really in the last moments, a K in the fourth grade, again, which is significant, a couple hundred thousand dollars really, to make sure that our class sizes were, they're lower than normal, but again, because of the space and what we want for our kids and our community. That's, that's, we, we invested in that for our kids. Coming up is going to be testing. The testing for our unvaccinated employees, which I see that that may be, that may or may not be an issue. I mean, I guess I'm anticipating that could be an issue. It's certainly different. And it's a mandate from the state level. I'm not sure what the federal mandate plays in this, President Biden's announcement just a couple days ago. So we have that, and then we're also working with, I mean, Pat Bay, working very hard day to day, or the weekend with myself and Ray DeLoseur, on not only having the testing for our unvaccinated teachers, but having different testing available for asymptomatic people who've been exposed and, and maybe other folks who may, who may want testing. So be a lookout for that and any, that may, that may, that may hurt them. And the last thing that hurt playgrounds, it's loving to be on the playgrounds. One of the, one of the things I've been doing over the last few days is going through all of our grants. This year, we have a basic ten million dollars in grants and going through and figuring out what are some of the things that we can jump on now and, and start, start purchasing or start seeking out. For instance, one thing we want is, is two vans. I know the, the business office, we ordered a good brand, two vans for space and travel and homeless kids that are coming to Beavetown, and we're having a hard time sourcing vans. So you can't source a new car or some of the other new things. But if we get on all these things now, I think we'll just, we'll have better outcomes at the end of the year. But one of the things that's, that we receive feedback from the community is our playgrounds at the elementaries are really nice, but they're not necessarily handicap accessible. So how can we invest in playgrounds that are really more, able to handle more neighbors' populations? So we challenging the operations committee with, with that. And the next thing, too, is the person that brought forward, the, the driving force behind that idea, brought forward solutions to the problem that she had, I'm sorry, really, that she had. Giving the board members who serve on the operations committee a chance to, to look at that and see if there's something we can do in the near future. So, and other than what all the principals said, thank you so much to everybody for another great start to this school year. If there was one year I would have thought that was gonna be a little bumpy, but then this year, but no, we're great teams, rising to the occasion, and that's certainly happened this year, so thank you guys.
Thank you. Any questions, board? Okay. Moving on, business manager, Jennifer Parman. Any reports?
Yep, I'm just gonna discuss briefly the internal claims audit that was in your package. I'm just gonna touch on it. We, this was a nineteen twenty internal claims audit. Because of COVID, nineteen twenty in large, we shut down. And that's normally when we do our internal audit. So we got behind because no one was allowed in the building. There was no one working, not here, wait, in the building. So last year, we did nineteen twenty. We're working on twenty twenty-one right now, and hopefully by May, we'll be doing twenty-one, twenty-two. So just to give you guys that, that heads up, we're, and all the schools are playing catch-up with this. So the internal claims auditor is also hard to get right now because he's playing catch-up as well. So, um, so what we did for the nineteen twenty audit was look at cash disbursements and expenditures and payroll. Those were their two main focuses. He, he does a broad overview of everything, but those are the two things he honed in on for, for the nineteen twenty year. We pick something different every year, so he takes a closer look at different things. The cash disbursements, if you looked in here, he looked at a couple different things as far as whether they had the right signatures on them, whether they had dates correct on them, whether POs were done correctly. If you looked at the findings on appendix one, there were no findings, which is exactly what we want. So, and he does a broad scan of different things. He looks for all kinds of factors. If there's a lot of different amounts that are the same, why are they the same? And he, he's very, very detail oriented, so when he dives in, he really dives in. So there are no findings with cash disbursements and expenditures. And then with payroll on appendix two, he also took a deep, deep look into that and wanted to see if contractual payments were done correctly. And then where there's a higher risk in the, in the claims, where there are actually claim forms, that's where you find higher risk of mistakes. So he did an audit of those as well, and again, there were no exceptions. There were no findings. Everything was done correctly. So that's a feather in the payroll's hat. They did a very good job, and our treasurer did a very good job. So I love an audit that comes out with no findings. So, so that's it in a nutshell. And are there any questions on any of this that you guys would like?
So in, in the audit report, there were some recommendations for, for further action. Is that something that's taken out by the committee later on?
In this, there...
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong audit. I was at the attached audit report to...
Um, the further action is just recommendations that he makes to, but there were no findings. He always recommends different ideas that he has. We can look at implementation of some of them. Some of them are possible. Some of them probably aren't possible because you might need more staff or... But there were no findings in, in this audit for the nineteen twenty.
I'll, I'll pull up the one that I was looking at. I, and it was just, you know, and maybe it's just minor, but it was like, for example, the, it talked about the, um, I'm missing the phrase, but the extracurricular activities and how there might be a need for policy for distributing funds left over by active clubs.
Yep, and we have, we do have a policy.
It leaves a recommendation, you know?
Yeah, and we do have a policy. He's done extra class for several years, actually. He likes to dive into extra class. That's one of his favorites.
Extra class, that's the phrase.
Yeah, yeah, he dives into that one often. Um, we do have a policy for that. It, it is a policy, and it rolls over to the next class. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Are you on, are you on the audit committee?
I am. I, I, my, I didn't know if I should wait for the committee to start because I was gonna ask.
No, no.
When that was going to, when the first, for this, this meeting, when that would first occur.
Yeah, we're, we're waiting for our regular, for our external audit for last year to, we still haven't.
So we wait for that, too?
We wait because that's what we really wanna go over with you guys, and the auditor will actually come in and speak to you as well.
And maybe we can take a deeper dive there, too.
Appreciate that. Just trying. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Jen? Okay, moving on, Exophistio Student Board Member, Riley Luckin. Riley, welcome. Any reports?
Hi, guys. I'm Riley Luckin. I'm gonna be this year's student council president, so I'm kind of a link between the student body and this council. I don't have anything to report from the other schools other than the high school. I will for next meeting. I'm sure that, that's gonna be my, my sort of ordeal. Basically, with council, student council, we set up homecoming. That kind of went out the window. It was all set up. That was, that was our, pretty much what our focus was the past month or so. We don't have any authority over prom. That's the class stuff. So homecoming, we allocated funds for it. I mean, not gonna spend anymore, so there isn't gonna be any expense. We had a DJ. He was actually going to volunteer. He's quite enthusiastic, so there's nothing lost in there. So we'll focus, move on and focus on something else. That's pretty much all I've got.
Questions, Jen? How, how do you feel the opening of school went, Riley?
Uh, it was outstanding. Definitely compared to last year, this feels a lot more of a return to school. It's a lot more tolerable with being able to socialize outside. I know the, the school social, social day was, that was perfect because I was, I was really happy to see. I was slightly concerned with how the new incoming freshmen were going to react to being in high school because I know that it, it feels completely foreign to me. It felt completely foreign to me last year, especially the year before. So I'm really happy with how it went, and I think it's gonna be a, a good year if that keeps up like this.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Riley, canceling, canceling those dances was a really tough decision.
I understand.
Yeah, we just didn't wanna have them, and the principals had big ideas. I'm sure you guys had big ideas. We still want a super spreader, but I wouldn't say they're canceled. I would say maybe they're postponed. You know, homecoming games won't be there, but I'm sure we could couple whatever's going on at the time, whether it's basketball or whatever. So we, once things, you know, once we become lower than the highest level zone, we can look at re-engagement prom and homecoming dances.
So if, um, the email read that homecoming was canceled?
So the, the homecoming dances, the dance for this weekend, I guess, had clarity. They probably said canceled, but, but like another dance later on in the year that would look a lot, would be more than a traditional dance.
Yeah.
Is something we could definitely look at. I know the principals would wanna, wanna do that. And of course, we have a prom. We still are gonna do the prom for last year's students, who still wanna do that, and then have a prom for this year's students. So there's, we're, we're looking, we're looking to do that for you guys.
Yeah, my understanding is that we need something like that. Because, I mean, I kind of feel like we're going to miss out if we don't have something like that. We already missed out last year.
Yeah.
We replaced our prom with the students, the seniors. I mean, they do have priority over us, but we don't wanna lose ours, too, so.
So I make a promise to you, and I don't, I don't, I definitely don't want you to feel like you miss out. So let's keep a look, um, every day, look at the numbers, keep an eye on the numbers, and when you see windows of opportunity, you gotta jump on it because you never know when the next area or something else is coming up, and we don't want to miss out at all. So I know what you're talking about, like we dance outside on the football field, and no matter what, at some point, well, I hope no matter what, at some point, we'll be able to make sure that you can check all the boxes for yours, senior year. We're committed to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to committee reports. Next is Hall of Fame. I'll give that report, and anyone who's on the committee, please feel free to chime in. But committee has been working hard on planning the event, which will be the homecoming weekend. While there still will not be the homecoming dance, there will still be the events, the games, still planning to host the ceremony. The, the committee worked very hard in procuring a tent, so we will be able to have that ceremony outside in the courtyard just so, so more people can gather safely. That's the weekend of October first, so we have Friday night games, football games, Saturday, some soccer games. There's a volleyball game.
I think that might be volleyball might be Friday.
Friday, yep, volleyball and football on Friday. Saturday, soccer being the luncheon and ceremony will be around eleven thirty. We'll be inducting ten members into the inaugural class. The Hall of Fame committee members self-included are working hard on selling some raffle tickets. So if you haven't been hit up yet for a raffle ticket, Cash Prize, it's, it's a great fundraiser. Feel free to see myself share with Jeremy or anyone else in the audience that's selling tickets. Feel free to sell away. But I, I think it's gonna be a wonderful event. The people who have been inducted are, are all very excited and very honored. And I think it's gonna be a great event for our community. We have one additional meeting this up, excuse me, following week to put the finishing touches on this. The, the hall of, the actual Hall of Fame is installed. Is that correct, Mr. Lindbergh?
Three quarters of it is, and the rest of it will be done inside of it.
Okay, it's, I'm told it looks amazing. I, I can't wait to see it. I think everyone did hard work with that. Anything I missed on Hall of Fame? Any questions about Hall of Fame?
Just, um, we're, counting the banquet is gonna be, it's gonna be hot Thai food. If you'd like to see, you can purchase a table to support Hall of Fame, and that gets a couple seats, I think, if you support the table. And it will be a really nice event to celebrate these amazing people who did such wonderful things for our school and community. And I think we've covered the rest.
Okay, moving on to reopening. Our reopening committee has really focused on how can we best keep our students and our staff safe and, and keep our students in school, because that is, that's really the goal, right? And I'm so happy to hear how well things have been going, you know, recognizing that there's, there's, like everything with the COVID pandemic, we gotta roll with the punches and, and things are gonna change. But we had some very good discussions as a reopening committee on, on how we think we can best do that safely. The state has given us some specific guidance as well, right, that, that, you know, implementing and, and following.
May I add one piece to that?
Yep.
So the state said follow the CDC guidance. The state said follow the CDC guidance, and then our county has the ability to go, be more rigorous than this, than the state. And in a couple small areas, they have gone a little bit further than the CDC guidance. So that can be confusing to parents, but that, that's the reality of, of our situation right now.
I, I mean, we could give an example. So last year, on buses, if there was exposure, there was an approximate contact, and the entire, the county would say, we're gonna quarantine the entire bus. And this year, as of right now, the county is following the distancing guideline and the time guideline as well. So I, I look at that as a positive, again, to, to keep the kids in school who are not affected, but to, to keep everyone as safe as possible.
There are, there are a couple other things, yep, but, yep, that's a good thing.
Any questions for the reopening committee?
Oh, could we just review what, a student who is placed in quarantine, how their educational program will be delivered for that short period of time?
Right, so do you want to move on to the STEEP comment?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. So, um, so again, if a student is placed on quarantine, my understanding is they're given their educational goals through their Google Classroom to kind of like, for example, if a kid was out on, they broke the record, they couldn't come to school, or, you know, or missing school for a family vacation, they have their set work that they have to do on their own. But Mr. Lozai, could you help us and understand what the STEEP program is, what's the place for these students?
Yeah, so quick to your STEEP, Kim Atal, who runs our program, did a wonderful job on how they work for the program to, and really... Kim Ashlock, who runs our program, does a wonderful job on how they work with the program to, and really, past years have been more in-person drilling. So what happened in the past year is the student has had detention. They get trouble with out-of-school detention, they go there, and it's, they do work with Kim Ashlock. You cut up, have a cop. It's been highly successful. We've had students that received out-of-school suspensions. That's the other piece, is that they would be out of school suspension, but they would get their education from three to five every day. Making it work, having tutors. A part of that process, we've had much different teachers. Some different condenary teachers, from math, science, who studies English, that would help those students get high, higher suspensions. We've got, since I've been here four years, any student that's been out of school suspension has support they need and, and graduates on time. So that's really kind of, and then the last piece that we've had in the past is the medical piece. So the student, if they came to school, medical reason, the piece there is having doctors know to make sure that they can take a test feed. And it's a process, we do have paperwork that does make the allow for the doctor to say that they have a medical condition and they cannot attend school. So we provide education at the end of the day. And that's kind of how it's gone in the past, and really just three problems, for the medical reasons, detention, and out-of-school suspension. This year, with the pandemic going on, that did change a little bit. And we've kind of, we've broadened that off. So we have more teachers available. And really, when it comes down to now, if we still do detentions, we'll start with available for out-of-school suspension. But now it's for those students that are Department of Health quarantined, number one, or the medical. So if a student now, you know, has a medical condition, they can't come to school because they ate COVID and wore a mask. If they have a medical, well, they can go to out-of-school seat as well. So kind of the process now, so the student gets quarantined, let's kind of go through that process. Department of Health, we have a deposit case on campus. They're within six feet, more than fifteen minutes. We get, we get a call, we provide that information to Health Department. The Health Department, then at that time, will quarantine students. We don't quarantine students here at high school. We give the Melissa students, based on their recommendation, about six feet or closer for fifteen minutes. And then what happens at that point is we provide information to the families that they're found to be quarantined. And what happens at that time is the student, there's Google Classroom. So our teachers are prepped right now to post all assignments on the Google Classroom. So any student that's out, missed a class, is in quarantine, can log on to Google Classroom period by period, get the assignments that they need, and, and stay up to date. The out-of-school seat now for those students is, will be, will be created in Google Classroom. So the Google Classroom for high school, middle school, and every elementary schools as well, is what they do, they go on to Google Classroom. There's a Google Meet code for any student that's quarantined by Department of Health or medical. They go on a classroom, there's Google Meets. And what happens is they go on to Google Meet, from two twenty to four thirty, we have breakout sessions within that. So their content area, breakout session. Students struggle with math. We have a math teacher that they can go to and get extra help with that. They have a struggling social studies teacher, they can break out in a breakout room, work virtually with a social studies teacher. So really, it's a wonderful opportunity, the tutoring session, the kids going through their day, getting assignments done, stay up to date. And then at the end of the day, for those two hours, they can go and get extra help from certified teachers in there and get the education they need to stay up to date. So a little bit different, it's not like we're doing, you know, throughout the day, you know, live meets. It is, but it's highly successful. Like I said in the past, the teachers in there do a great job, making sure our kids are on time, making sure that they're doing the right thing and, and getting up on their foot. That's kind of the overall, is there any questions about the process of STEEP or any, you know? Got them all sort of.
So I, in closing, I just want to point out that that's more support than we've ever given before for people that are out sick. And I can say that specifically. My son was in the ICU in, in New Haven, Connecticut for a week. There's pictures of him on Facebook doing his math homework on a Chromebook. And I was just thankful we had a Chromebook and they could, the teacher could give him the, the information. Now, under that situation now, there'd be, not only that, but you'd have people to talk to and, and extra help in the evening. Right after, my son got out there, and now my other son went into the hospital for a long period of time. And at that point, again, Chromebook and the teacher would be great at giving the information and would connect with, the, the classroom teacher was getting paid to connect with him periodically for two hours a day. Now we have content teachers available twenty-four, not twenty-four seven, but seven, or five days a week for at least two hours a day. So there's, it's just, there's just more resources now than ever for our kids that are out for any type of medical reason. Really, and really, we, we've enhanced it because of so many kids will be out for quarantine. So, and I got to applaud the, the principals for making that work. We've never done this before in the elementary level, and it's working. We have three teachers that are in doing it, and then the high school, middle school. We have a lot, a lot of experience in this, and it's been very, very successful. So when, I just, it's different. People might think they want to be in a live meet. This is better than the live meet. I would, I think everybody would agree with that. Better for everybody.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to the minutes as presented. Resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. Can I please have a motion?
Motion, Jeremy.
Can I have a second?
I'll second, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Is there any discussion about these minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Motion passes. Moving on to the CSC and the CPSC recommendations. Resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSC, CPSC, and five of the four recommendations dated September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Nicholas. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda. Resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, and retirement be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Jeremy.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any second? Is there any discussion about these items?
I just have a quick discussion question. Honestly, just for understanding, in subsection K of the agreement as the EMT, I'm just curious, is the EMT, is that for like, as an eyesight basis when there are like school functions? Or is this someone that's on call for EMT services? Like, how does that work?
Good question. Good, good question. The EMT is here, are we employing EMT for collision sports? So the boys hockey and boys football are collision sports. I don't think we've ever hired them to come to another, to another event. But that's exactly, that's why we're there, just because you're going to deal with more, more concussions.
Thank you.
And actually, we had one in our first game.
Hope that's students recovering. Does anybody have any other discussions for this section under first cell? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any noes? Resolution passes. Moving on. Page ten out of fourteen, under miscellaneous. Resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, employment agreement, associate dean, employment agreement, school safety officer, contract SRO, and MTSS plan be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Cheryl.
Have a second, please?
Second, Jeremy.
Is there any discussion on this section?
Couple of quick discussions. As much of the other lines for understanding. For AB, the associate dean, is that for both elementary schools, the joint, or is it just for one?
Yeah, if you recall, the board did approve the hiring of an associate principal. And we had interviews, and we couldn't come to an agreement on a successful candidate. So we went to somebody we knew internally who had previous success, being like the dean of students at Cumberland Head, and then later moved to assistant principal at the middle school, high school. And that had a, a really strong teaching career here at Beattie Town Middle School. He retired, and we knocked on his door to share both, to share the responsibility in both buildings. So next year, this is just a one-year situation. Next year, we hope to find the associate dean and, for the, for both buildings, and it, and they, that person would share like this person's tune.
And one more question, the school safety officer, you see that there are two. Is it one for each building, or is it for one for?
Yeah, so there's those, so previously, we would, we would allocate, we would receive a hundred thousand dollars from government, all over, community schools. And we would secure the services of, full-time SRO, we were the first school district to secure those services of full-time SRO at our inner building. Then the community schools money went away, and we hired, we still wanted to, to have a security presence. So we retired, we hired two retired SROs as security officers. And they were split up amongst the four buildings. But then the SRO, the sheriff's department received a grant, significant grant. And they said, hey, we can do this for a third of the price. So now we actually have three individuals, and the schedule was just developed by the principals. Three individuals in the four buildings. They rotate, and they're here to make sure that, they're, they're here for safety, and they do more than just safety. So, but we have three individuals for less than what we used to pay one person to do.
Any other discussion? Seeing that there's none, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstains? Motion passes. Okay, moving on to the financial section. Resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, financial reports, and internal audit be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Cheryl.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing that there's none, we have a rule call vote, please, Chelsea.
Douglas Levy. Jared Connor.
Aye.
Patty Mclem. Cheryl McKenzie.
Aye.
Ed Merritt. Christopher Mashaw.
Aye.
Crystal Palmer.
Yes.
The vote before, yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to additional items to discuss. We have, we have two things to discuss. The first, we have an open seat. Board member Colleen Stone resigned, so we need to fill her seat. We've had twelve letters of interest submitted from our community. Thank you so much. It's so exciting to see so many people want to volunteer their times to be part of this district. What we have asked the current Board of Education members to do is to pick the top two choices, and we'll present that now. The one thing I will say is we do need to have five members in agreement on, on our number one choice. And there's five people here today. So I suggest we just go around and, and see what each of our top two choices are. And if we are not unanimous for the person to be appointed to this empty seat, we can table it and move on and discuss this at the next meeting, as we have ninety days to fill this seat. This seat will be until the next election. And this person will be assigned to the Health and Safety Committee for their, their spot. So I guess I'm, I'm willing to go first. Again, read through all these twelve letters of interest. Take some notes here. So my.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I believe we had asked, or opened the floor to the, the candidates to, to give a speech today, if I'm not mistaken? And I know that at least one of them is here tonight.
Thank you. I mean, I.
They did, I think they.
Yep, somebody had questions last time for a candidate that was here.
Okay.
So, I mean, I guess, so, so Patrick Garso is here?
Yes.
So I guess, members, anyone who has read Mr. Garso's letter of interest, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Garso to answer before we state our preferences of the people who apply?
Well, I guess, since you're here, could you just briefly say what, what do you think you would bring to the board?
Yeah, that's, thank you for asking my question. I'm not familiar with everyone, so I'd like to have that opportunity to let you know. I'm a longtime resident here. I, I started at Cumberland Head in elementary, so I've been to that school. I, I went through Beatment Town Central. I've been a lifelong resident right on Wallace Hill in, in the town of Plasberg. So I've always been a supporter of the Beatment Town Central School District. Whether it be sports, extracurricular activities, like the music program, the Mardi-Bras Nations, the, the fundraising opportunities that the school, you know, has. I've always been a supporter of that. In my professional career, I, I like to thank the, the people in my school. I haven't had the chance to talk to them recently, but Gary Lambert actually is the one that helped get me started in IT. And that's actually what my career is. I worked for Dell Technologies and Dell Enterprise. And it's, it's because of staff and faculty like him that, that got me started. And so I want to take the opportunity to give back. I want to be someone to listen, listen to the concerns of the, of the community, of the parents, of the staff, of the administration. And be able to help support the needs and the pain points to resolution that this district has. I, I just want to see the district continue, continue success. I'd like to be a part of that, and I'd like to use some of my knowledge in STEM to maybe help benefit those areas in the school district. So thanks for talking.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so again, let's, I'll start, we'll go around. If we're, essentially, if we're not unanimous in our first choice, we will table this and, and discuss it again at the next appointment, excuse me, the next board meeting. Again, just a reminder to any of these twelve candidates, if, if you are not selected now or at next meeting, whenever we do this, please consider running for the Board of, Board of Educat, Board of Education in the springtime. Okay, so as I mentioned, I'm, I'm happy to start. My first choice after reading these letters would be Courtney Miller. And my second choice would be Kimberly Ireland. I'm going to move around the room this way. Nicole, can I have your selection, please?
I seem to be on the same page as Chris Paul.
Okay.
After reading and considering everybody, I would actually be surprised by the number of interests. So that was, that was encouraging. But I also, based on the letters, hesitation of those, that Courtney Miller and I.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Kimberly Ireland was, was my top choice. And actually, Courtney was my second choice.
Okay. Chris?
Patrick Garso would be my first choice, and Courtney Miller would be the second choice.
That's true.
The same way, like, my first choice was Kimberly Ireland, and my second choice was Courtney Miller.
Okay. So again, in order to make an appointment, we would need at least five members to choose the same person. We only have five Board of Education members here today, and there's not a unanimous decision. So we are going to move this discussion to the next meeting, and we will, we will revote. And I guess we can have a discussion as a, hopefully as a full board next time. Get a question?
Those can apply because Courtney Miller and Ireland are here.
Courtney was your last, and she's not yours.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, any, any other comments or questions? You play in the open seat. Okay, moving on. The next item to discuss is the Board Retreat and Training. There has been a date selected, and I believe it is.
October.
October fifth.
October fifth.
At five thirty, and we need to discuss the location, or has that been decided all? At five thirty and we need to discuss the location or has that been decided also?
Well, so we've always, we've, Joanne and I have always knocked on a ton of doors to see if there was a location other than the butcher block. Just to share the, share the business, so to speak, of what happens when you have a retreat. Usually, all those other places are like, yes, you can have it, but it's going to cost you two, three, four hundred dollars just to secure the room. So we go to the butcher block, this year, the butcher block is taken at this point.
Okay.
So we have had retreats here before, here in the school. So we'll set up a retreat here and we'll have dinner. And we have a facilitator coming from the New York State School Wars Association, who we've, I don't know if it's the one we've used before, but we've used New York State School Wars before, they do a really, really good job. So has, you, Jeremy, you've probably been to one.
Oh, yeah.
And have, have you, have you two been to a retreat? Oh, you have, very good, so.
And just so you guys know, we, we in the past have tried to choose a facility that's in, in district.
Yeah, in district, yeah, yep. So we'll probably have it catered, I think, I mean, nothing elaborate, but, you know, have some food. You definitely have dinner here and we'll probably be here till eight thirty, nine o'clock, just discussing different best practices in board governance. I think that's, that's it, it should be a great, I've always enjoyed it, it's a great, great dialogue.
What's the table site for the three dates? Have I missed something before?
Oh, did you get the date sent to you or not?
Wasn't sure if those, definitely could make it, could make it.
Sounds like the fifth was the best date. Okay, any other additional items to discuss before moving on? Oh, I have one thing, I noticed that the hometown hero banners went up on under twenty-two and won my heart to see mine before it up there. So I don't know the other HVA member, but thank you to all who have served, really appreciate it. Okay, moving on to public comments, same rules as before. We ask that you keep your comments to two minutes or less, that you make general statements. And again, there's not necessarily any response, it's just for the board to consider. So that being said, would anybody in the audience like to make a comment?
I would love to take another shot at it.
Sure.
So, understanding that what you're looking for is just comments, some concerns from my constituents and from people that I've talked to in the community. Along, as well as myself, we would like to see more communication, more understanding from the Board of Education and communicating messages out to the community. For instance, on the appointment, the instruction set of what you guys were looking for was very vague. And then there was also no follow-up communication. A receipt of communication, yes. And questions that were asked were replied to. But what, what the process would be, I mean, I think it would be great to have the candidates speak. I would have been here last time if I would have known to be here. Also, just understanding when the meetings are. I think it's awesome, I'm a parent now, the Parrot Square is in the calendar, but the community doesn't have that. Till recently, I was a part of that community for Parrot Square. So those are some, I think communication is probably the biggest thing I would like to see from the board going forward. That's my comment.
Thank you, we'll take that into consideration. Anybody else? Okay, moving on, executive session, anything that we need to-
So Mr. Merritt brought up talking about collective bargaining. I don't know if it makes sense to do that with a limited number. We can totally, absolutely can, it's up to you.
I don't strongly feel the need to because we're going to have the same conversation again and we're not going to make any decisions.
There's no decision, there's no, right?
It's just an update.
It would just, it would be an update. Would you like an update?
Guys like an update?
Wait, I can wait.
What does that feature is maybe shorter, that's a little longer.
Try to keep it short no matter what.
I like what I did, I'm all just getting it.
Yeah, we haven't, we, I actually met informally with Mr. Mott, I can say this in public. And we put out a public document not too long ago where the last time we met was mid-August. So there hasn't been a lot of, you know, there hasn't been a lot of, there's been no change really to status. So, you know, that's where we, that's where we are. We could get into further details in executive session, but that's public knowledge.
Okay. Okay, so then we are going to adjourn the meeting. Resolved that the Board of Education adjourned the meeting at seven thirty-three. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Chris, thank you. I'll second, thank you, Cheryl. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Upstays? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for your time.